Good evening. Today's July 14th, 2015, 6:35 PM. Board of Selectmen meeting. All selectmen are present and accounted for. First item, 6:30 PM, Verizon, New England and Massachusetts Electric Company poll hearing regarding Clifford Street. Mr. Purple?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We have an application made jointly by Verizon and Mass Electric, N-Grid, to install two new poles on Clifford Street. And I will let -- is there someone here this evening from -- yes, to -- they can explain the project. Essentially, I believe that this is to provide service or to make changes to the existing service and that to accommodate, I believe, the new houses that are going in on the other side of the street. The hearing is advertised to be held on Tuesday, July 14th, 6:30 PM, second floor hearing room of the South Borough Townhouse.
Sir, good evening.
Good evening.
Please.
Need to use the microphone.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir. My name is Thomas Blickhars. B as in boy, L-I-C-H-A-R-Z as in zebra.
I don't think you turn that on.
She's coming to fix you.
Okay.
Are we okay?
Yes, sir.
Is that better? Okay. Thomas Blickhars, again, B as in boy, L-I-C-H-A-R-Z as in zebra. I'm a retired Verizon engineer and I now work for a company, UC Synergetic. We are consultants for rights of way and engineering for Verizon. So I'm here on behalf of Verizon to petition for these two new pole locations. Mr. Purple got it right. These new poles are to service four new homes being built on Clifford Street. They're up on a side hill, pretty steep hill. And so these poles, these two poles are intermediate poles. No poles are coming out. There's two new poles being added. These two new poles will be the mainline poles to go up the hill where Verizon will place two private property poles. The wires will then come from the two new poles to the two private property poles up on the hill. One pole will serve two homes and the second pole will serve two homes. So it's for servicing these four new homes. I was out there this evening with property owner for number 24 and Jeff, you know, he explained his disapproval for the pole in front of his home. So we spent a few moments talking about some alternatives. But anyways, I know we have at least one objection here to one of the poles.
Are you done?
Yes, sir.
So what are the alternatives to address the objection? Are there any alternatives?
Well, I believe there's always a Plan B.
Okay.
I believe it perhaps would not be fair to Jeff to have two mainline poles in front of his home because this is what would end up if we did that. So it might be possible to place a pole 15 and 1/2 on the opposite side of the street. But I don't know what the power company had in mind when they, and Verizon's engineer, called for 15 and 1/2 where it was staked today. I can only think that N-Grid needs to place a transformer to service those two new homes up the hill. So they need a new pole for equipment.
So as an engineer, they cannot utilize existing pole number 15 for that same purpose?
Well, they are already probably serving the home at number 24 from that transformer. If they can serve two more homes -- I'm not a power engineer, sir, or communication, so I think it'd be worth going back to the drawing boards to see if N-Grid could do something different out there.
Because it appears that the poles 15 and 15 and 1/2 are relatively close together.
Yes, they are. Yes, they are. So, you know, there may be an alternative that we can explore for the pole required in front of number 24.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is the reason why --
Your mic's not on.
Thanks. Just one question. Is the reason why there are new poles here because -- is there any reason any of this can't be done off the three existing poles? Is it a matter of structural integrity? Is the gear gets too heavy for the existing poles?
It's a matter of geography. These four homes are up on that high side bank, if you've ever been out there.
Yes.
And so to get to these homes, if it's not done as it's shown on the sketch at right angles, then Verizon and the N-Grid would be crossing one's private property to get to another private property. And that we do not do. It's try to place the poles on a neutral private property line and then we go from there. So we don't cross one property to feed another property. We also need those poles because of the height. If we didn't place the private property poles on the side hill, then there'd be no clearance over the road. So that's going to give us the height to get over the road. So if you were to go out there, the spans between the existing poles, 14 to 15, 15 to 14, 14 to 13 to 12, are great, 200 feet plus spans. Those are very long spans for utility companies. Typically, we go 130, 140. So these poles are sort of intermediate poles for the long spans as well. But where they're placed, they are placed right on the property line as you look up the hill so that when we place the service wires, it'll be on neutral territory, if you will, to hit the private property pole to go left and right. So there was some thought put into the location of these two poles as the wires go up the hill. If they were placed more to the side, then we'd be angling. We'd be crossing one private property to hit another private property.
Understood. Appreciate the thought went into it. I didn't suspect otherwise. I was just curious about the engineering necessity. Thank you. That's it for me.
Mr. Shea?
Yeah. So I was actually out Sunday as well, looking at both of these pole locations. And I understand the objection that you have with the pole that was going to be right at the corner of your driveway. And I understand why you've positioned the new poles where you have opposite the corners to make it easy to run the service there. I do encourage you to look at alternatives for the pole in front of number 24, but also I know the existing poles seem to line up, you know, with the spans they have, essentially with property corners as well, so that the poles are between two houses as opposed to directly in front of a house.
Yeah.
But I'd also encourage you to look at the pole at number 20 as well, the new 11 and 1/2, because that pole, I went out and taped that off, and that's going to be right in the middle of, you know, the center of that gentleman's house at number 20 as well. So if anything, so he's going to have, you know, two at each corner plus one in the middle now as well.
Yeah, I know.
So if there's any -- and I understand why you're doing what you're doing, but it almost seems that it's being done at the expense of the existing homes on that street.
Right.
And I wonder if there's any way that you could look at an alternative to put that pole 11 and 1/2 on the opposite side of the street too.
Yeah.
Because he's serving those homes, so they ought to probably get the pole instead of more poles on the people on the other side of the street.
Exactly. Yeah, I appreciate that. And I'll go back to Verizon's engineering department and also we'll get together with the N-Grid and we'll see if there's an alternative, perhaps placing those poles on opposite side of the street as the service pole on the property line to go straight up the hill.
Mm-hmm.
All right?
Okay.
So maybe we can continue this.
Any further questions?
I'm just curious. My home is on a hill and I have four poles getting to my home on Middle Road. I have family members that build homes on Parkerville Road, also on a hill.
Right.
And their electrical service comes from the pole underground.
Mm-hmm.
So why isn't that an option? And there is a pole 16 across from Mr. Shebe's house. So why aren't we starting there, bringing it up the driveway underground so we're not adding any more poles at the expense of the developer?
The expense for those trenches will be on the developer or the property owner. Those expenses would not be on the utility company. So we still need to get across the street. So the houses are being built on the opposite side of where the pole line is. So if we're going to do trenching, then we're going to dig up the street to get across the street first. And then you're going to have to dig a trench right straight up the hill and then a trench each way to each of the first two homes and do the second thing in front of number 20, dig a trench across the road and then go up.
With a junction mark. But I believe there's a pole 16 at the driveway of these four homes and there's another pole at the other end, number 12.
Yeah.
There's two poles on that side of the street.
Yeah, well, I know. I think I know where pole 16 is on the corner there. That's a lot of trenching, so.
It's better than two poles in somebody's front yard.
Well, that's very expensive, so.
I understand it's expensive. My son had to do it, but.
Right. So going underground for pole 16, I'll certainly bring that to the attention of the power company.
Thank you.
But I can tell you, it'll cost a lot of money to do that.
Mr. Flender?
No, I agree with Mr. Shea. A little more work needs to be done.
Is there anyone here that would like to add? Any comments? Obviously, we've indicated that we're not ready to approve this based upon the existing design and the concerns that have quite candidly and thank you, sir, for your presentation and being so forthright, some of the concerns we have. Yes, sir?
Okay. I'm Richard Wallace. I live at 18 Clifford Street. So in front of my home is pole 11. And I've measured 98 feet, according to this diagram, to the new existing pole. That puts it right at the, right next to my driveway. So I don't feel that's a very good placement for that pole. It will block my view as I leave my driveway. So I also would like to request that an alternative be found for that reason as well.
And if you could take that back, sir. I mean, one of the questions that I have by just looking at this, my immediate question is, it looks like you're trying to fit five poles in an area that could certainly be serviced by four. If you were starting the construction anew and there were no existing poles there, I don't think you'd try to fit five in there. You'd probably try to fit four. And the question is, since you're trying to, you're applying to install two new ones, if four new ones could be installed in a much more consistent and acceptable manner, perhaps that would be another way to look at it as well. But did you have something to say in response to Mr. Wallace's concerns?
Yeah, I do, because I was out there, sir, and I measured that same 96 feet and I, we didn't come anywhere near a driveway. And I'll be glad to go back out that way tonight after the meeting. We can take a look together.
Okay.
I measured back at 96 feet. It seemed like we were mid-span, but not near a driveway, so.
Well, okay, I may have made a mirror, but that's what I came up with.
Okay. Well, I plan to go back that way this evening and meet with Jeff and we'll take a second.
Sir, did you say you were at 18 Clifford?
18.
So I think that the proposed new pole is in front of 20. I think maybe you measured the opposite direction.
Well, 20.
Do you have this, sir, this diagram?
Is that?
Yeah, okay.
Yes. Well, those poles that are being inserted, put there, are in front of the new construction.
I could use the mic, sir.
This diagram shows poles being placed in front of the new construction. So I'm measuring in the right direction. I'm going.
Southeast.
Southeast, right.
Okay. Well, given your willingness to go out there now, unless you happen to be going somewhere other than home, I'm sure you guys can go out there together and figure out exactly where the measurement is being confused.
Okay. Can you do it now?
Yes.
And you have another comment? Yes, sir?
Just one quick comment. Jeff Shebe, 24, Clifford Road. I understand you more than likely move forward to go back and look at some alternatives. But just one comment. I'm not an engineer, but the poles in front of our house, there's only about a foot and a half between the pavement and the stone wall, the old colonial stone wall.
Are you talking about which pole number, 15 and 1/2?
15 and 1/2, yeah. So and that ground is already very, very susceptible to cable. Across the street, solid as a rock.
Mm-hmm.
So there's plenty of space to put maybe two service poles. So I think an alternative plan might be the right one to do, but I'm not an engineer. So I'll let the engineers take care of that. All right?
Mr. Blickhars, is that it? Sir, we appreciate your willingness to work with the community and the residents and perhaps we can reschedule this at a time of your convenience to come back. And thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome.
So we'll continue this. 6:45 PM, continue Class 2 hearing, P&amp;H Management Corp., 264 Quarterville Road. Mr. Purple?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is a continuation of the Class 2 license that we have, an application by P&amp;H Management Corporation for 260-Ville Quarterville Road. As you may recall, last time that this was brought before the board, the plan was presented and the board was, provided some information and the board asked for additional information, better clarification. That information was received, distributed to the board. I believe that you have plans in front of you this evening and I believe the applicant is here to, I think, go over those and provide any explanations that the board may have require.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's John McAuliffe. I'm an attorney and I'm representing P&amp;H Management. And with me tonight is Mr. Peter Bemis, who's an engineer, who has drawn up a new plan that was submitted to the members of the board. Mr. Bemis will do a presentation, but this is follow-up to the previous application or the application that was submitted and the request to update the plan. I know over the past years, this site has had some issues and we've made, we're making an attempt here to move forward. We've pulled the gasoline tanks out and there's no service, gas service, but it's a auto-service station. And the redirect and the effort here is to do the repairs and car sales and put forth a site plan and ask for approval of a Class 2 used car license. The site previously, up until I think sometime in the early to late 90s, had had a Class 2 license at the location. And Mr. Aswad, though has, you know, over the years gone through some of his own personal issues, wants to move on, has spent particularly the last several months and focused mostly since working with myself and town council and the building department to get the site into something that, that actually he's very proud of now and wants to have something more involved in the community, has worked really hard to upgrade the site, keep it clean, update it, remove some of the issues that caused concern. So devoting to that continual improvement at the site and really to reinvesting in the location and making it, you know, part of that community, he would like to move forward with this plan. I have Mr. Bemis here to explain the site plan and give the presentation and hopefully, you know, we're here for comment and hopefully we can move forward on this proposal. Thank you.
What we have before you is a site plan. It's based upon a ground survey that we performed at 264 Quarterville Road. You're also seeing the proposed, so I'm sorry, there's one that just goes to existing. And if we can follow my pen, I'll try to put you on the existing pavement limits. So if we start here at the north, so orientation of the plan is going from right to left for north. Quarterville Road across here to the west, if you will, Woodland Road to the east here. So if we followed the existing pavement limits, the pavement limits are right here. There's like a small island that's been created. And then you just have open pavement through this section of the site along Woodland Road. There's pavement that terminates here and the pavement begins again here, coming back and tying into the building. You have open pavement coming back to this position and then we've got gravel coming to here where there's an existing fence in disrepair coming through this portion of the site to the west. And then we come back again along gravel to get to the pavement. So again, following the pavement back, that's here. This is a proposed island. So again, coming across, we'd have open pavement. You come to this position here where there's a concrete pad. That's where the filling station component had been, existing building here. And we come across and again, we have open pavement until we get back to this island. So you basically have a buffer at this position here to the south and you have a buffer here, if you will, this existing stockade fence to the north, building in the middle, small little island, if you will, of, actually, from about here back, small little island of landscape, if you will. And what we've tried to do is put some divisions in place. So we've taken our pavement limits and tried to reduce them by putting in an island here and then an island here. We're going to restrict travel from Woodland Road at this position and again, another island here and then a freestanding island here. So we're again controlling traffic as it comes through from Woodland Road to Quarterville Road here. We have 10 parking spaces on the north side, eight parking spaces on the south side. We've got two parking spaces that form here further south. And if we come back to the other end of the site, we've got a handicap parking space. We need to have one requisite handicap parking space, up to 25 parking spaces. And then we've got four more here in total. So we've got a total of 24 parking spaces on the site. We do have an island again that forms here along Woodland Road, coming back and tying into that existing island and coming back. So this restricting all travel that currently is afforded access onto the site from Woodland Road. You could only come through from here or come back onto Quarterville Road here. Each one of these island areas is proposed to be landscaped. There's a landscape planting list on the plan. We're proposing four different varieties of plants. There's quazon cherries. We've got green leaf lindens, fountain grass, which is a dwarf variety, and day lilies. Little bit of color in the summer with the grasses. They can tolerate the salt content because we're going to be getting salt here unfortunately from our treatment of the road areas. We've got another island here, again, with those same low-lying shrubs so that we don't cut off site distance. We've tried to open up this corner. So again, we've got good site distance going to the north, coming through this intersection. Currently, when you come here, there is parking that goes on in this section of the site. So it does restrict site distance coming off of Woodland Road to come out onto Quarterville Road. And we've got a couple of buffer trees here. We do provide for some snow storage along the perimeter of these parking areas. Obviously, with the amount of snow that we had this past year, this is the type of site. With this type of parking program, you'd have to haul offsite at some point. There's just not enough snow storage on site. The other thing I wanted to identify is that this fence that's in disrepair would be removed. We're proposing to put in a vinyl-coated fence. That's shown here for detail. Parking space detail is here. Some general landscaping notes to ensure the contractor that's retained to do that work will follow this and do them in good horticultural standards. We've also got details for the planting. Fairly straightforward plan for your consideration. So I thank you.
By when would all of those things be done? Do you have dates on each of those things that are hard, committed dates?
Yeah, I think we could fix that. I think, obviously, Mr. Aswad would like to get a license from you to be able to sell automobiles so we can generate revenue with this proposal. I'm not really prepared to speak to that, but I know it's this chicken and egg that comes with these sorts of things. I certainly would say it could be tied down. He's gone a long way to making some improvements to the site. It's a heck of a lot better site than the first time I ever came here to have Louis do some work for me, so.
There have been plans before.
Yeah, understood.
And then nothing. I mean, it all sounds good. I mean, you're very well spoken. You know, it looks better on paper, but then, you know, is it going to come to fruition?
How's it going to come? No, I'm with you. I would see no problem with that. I think that certainly some of the improvements could be made, you know, in advance of an approval or pending an approval. I just think that there needs to be some incentive by both parties. You folks want, and I, as a resident, want to see something happen at this corner. I think this is a pretty good proposal. It's within the means that Mr. Aswad has to financially fulfill what's shown on this plan, because I've reviewed it with him.
So are there financial--
If he can get a license, then I think that that would be, he'd have the way of making the investment.
So are there, is the financial means there and are there dates that could be solidified as to, all right, I have the funds for it. This isn't just a, you know, a good-looking plan. I actually have funds for it and these are the dates and these are, I even have contractors lined up. Here's what I'm going to do, by when. If you grant a license, I commit that I'm going to have these things done. And if I don't get them done, feel free to pull the license.
I think that's the way it's got to be.
Here's what, here's what I plan, here's what I will do.
Microphone to the guy that can say yes to that because I wouldn't disagree.
Before you do, what is that flesh-colored?
Oh, sure. Yeah, I can go through that. We've been using a lot more natural stone today than mulch and that's what I had envisioned here.
Same as surrounding the building there?
Yes, yes. It would be a landscape treatment, so it would read that way, but we're just trying to have sustainability. You know, mulches, they have to be replaced every year, whereas the stones are a little bit more of a fixed resource and need to be cleaned, obviously, over time. But it just has a better presence and it doesn't need to be maintained as often. It has a better look. So that's what we had proposed. We did say it could be done intermittently, so if he elected to do mulch, he could do mulch.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from the building inspector or council before we hear from the applicant directly.
Ask for a clarifying question on the plan.
Sure. Mr. Bemis?
I'm trying to get the timeline if you want it.
Yep, thank you.
Just want to ask if there's any new pavement going down under this plan?
Yep. This is the existing edge of pavement today.
Okay.
So there's new pavement to be put around and it's identified on the plan.
Yes, council. Yes. Did you want to give me a little background on this? Please. This matter has been the subject of a enforcement action for probably over 18 months. Part of the reason that Mr. Aswad is before you tonight is the result of an agreed-upon court order that compels him to come back before the Board of Selectmen to seek a Class 2 license. And with current counsel, that has been very cooperative and nothing to do with what's before you tonight, but if he wishes to do any increase in use of that area, he would have to seek other zoning redress. But the point is that everybody understood that the best place to try to resolve this site issue is in this building and not the court in the Superior Court of Worcester. So all of this is coming about as a result of the fact that he was not in compliance and he hopefully would be on the road to compliance under this license. This license, if you did grant it, would only be to the end of the calendar year. So it's kind of like a report card. If you set conditions on this license and those conditions are not met or something falls short in the use of this license, then that's reviewed at the end of December.
Just for purposes of clarification, you said that this application or this presentation is in response to a court order.
That's correct.
Can you tell us a little bit about that, just a frame of reference?
What I have historically done when there has been any form of regulatory violation is initially the building commissioner will issue an administrative cease and desist. That's a local order. And then subsequently, if there's not complete compliance, then we seek a court order on the building inspector's administrative order. Historically, there have been issues with compliance, but I will admit that most recently, particularly with Attorney McAuliffe involved, there has been a higher level of cooperation to get to the result that we're looking for in terms of the enforcement, which is compliance with local law and state law.
Is there a requirement or is it the procedure that we need to issue the Class 2 license before these improvements are made or can we wait until after these improvements are made and then issue the Class 2 license?
Well, you have administrative discretion.
I'd imagine to do it either way. If you did condition the plan for compliance, as I said, it's a report card by the end of the year. Or if there's a non-compliance in a date certain, if you say these, we're going to grant you the license, but all of this work needs to be done by September 1st. And there is a non-compliance, then council understands that you have the right, the administrative right, to seek a revocation of that license before it lapses in December. So you have a whole group of administrative enforcement remedies. And it's up to you how you decide to approach it. If you want to get the work done in advance or you want it to be done subject to the conditions.
Has the building inspector seen this proposed plan that's here?
I believe he has. I'm going to let him speak to that because he's the principal individual for enforcement.
Counselor, one more question. So in your opinion, is the town's enforcement abilities, would they be greater now without a license? Or would they be enhanced if the license were approved?
I think they'd be enhanced if the license was approved. Because I mean, you have more local control. Otherwise, we're left with legal arguments relative to state statute to the Superior Court. And again, as I indicated, it's better to try to resolve these matters locally in this townhouse instead of trying to continuously adjudicate them in the Superior Court.
But if I recall, correct me if I'm incorrect, we can approve the license contingent upon these improvements being made by a date certain?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Mr. Robidoff?
Yes. I've looked at the plan. I've got it this morning. There's about 25 parking spots. There's a couple of things. I think one of the handicap spots, it doesn't look like it's, it'll meet the accessibility requirements. Some minor things, you might want to look and see how many spots you want them to have. If 25 is the number you want, then 25 is a good number. If you want less.
How many vehicles, right now it looks like it's jam-packed. Like you cannot fit even a small, thin bicycle on the property now. Is this proposing to increase the number of parking spaces that are there, that's there now?
Well, it looks like it's just laid out a little bit different. And maybe Peter can speak to that.
So that's the problem. It does look chaotic.
Yes.
There's no management structure whatsoever. And that's why this layout does provide the structure and definition that's really needed here. And also for flow. Because you can come through here and there are cars parked at every angle. So there's no way for vehicles to pass through the site, frankly, to get from one side to the other and then take this pathway. So that's what the definition is being provided here, is to show that this is the layout. It does efficiently lay out these parking spaces. They're done in a pattern that makes sense. They have the normal nine by 18. I mean, this is a normal parking space you'd see in any parking lot. And it has a good layout. The one piece that we didn't touch was that service island here because that's a bigger expense for him. And at some date, that does need to come out. I would anticipate that. And I did leave it just the way it is. There are two parking spaces here. You can still get in and out of them properly because it happens to be that the island falls right on the midpoint of that. So you can get in and out of those spaces fine. But everything that I've shown on here is something that I believe can be implemented. I believe that that's the right way to do it, is that you condition the approval. And I have made it clear to P and H management that you either step up and do this and put this in play or you don't do it. Because I don't, you can't go forward with half of it.
Mr. Bemis, let me ask you a question. It seems like you have the plantings along Woodland Road as a matter of a screening perhaps?
It is. It is to separate it.
Is there a reason that the screening could not or does not continue down the front of Quarterville Road?
Because you've got too many turning movements here. They have to get in and out of these garage doors for service bays. So it would be nice to carry it forward, but there has to be some limitation. I need to be able to get parking at this portion of the site too. And then anything in that area would just have to be very low anyways, but it would restrict turning movements through here. You know, the one spot maybe we could do a small extension might be here at a future date when this comes out. But you really need to have access through this portion of the site unfortunately.
Before I open it up to questions, Mr. Aswad, do you have anything you would like to add or tell the board before we ask questions, sir, other than what your counsel and your engineer has told us? Hold on, hold on, hold on. You need to stand up first of all and get the microphone. Okay, now you can speak.
Our goal is to make this site aesthetically pleasing to the area as we've ever had it. And I want to keep it like that. We're very happy at how it's coming along and we're getting a lot of compliments from the local people in the area.
And sir, assume for a moment in response, we'll follow up to Mr. Kalenda's question earlier. If we were to grant this license contingent upon completion by a date certain, what's the earliest date certain that you said that this work can be done?
I think I can have it done.
No, no. I don't want you to think. I want you to tell us the date that it can be done by. Because if we decide to approve the license contingent upon that date, I don't want you to think about that date. I want you to tell us the date that you're comfortable that that work can be done.
September 30th.
Can you tell us why you picked that date?
I think between the pavement and the plantings, I think it could be done sooner. I just want to be able to deliver what I say. I'd like to get it done sooner, within 30 days.
Okay, so when we do plantings, they really shouldn't, unless they're going to be properly watered. And he doesn't have irrigation here. And I don't want to introduce irrigation as part of the formula. So for these to establish, we're really talking September 15th to be able to initiate that. I would probably suggest that it might be able to get done, but he's giving him basically two weeks to finish it. I would suggest, Lou, just to give yourself a little bit more time and go to the middle of October, that makes more sense to me. But this is all saw cutting of existing pavement limits to put in these landscaped areas here and here. This is some small amount of additional paving that does need to occur at the site at this position here. And then there's obviously the installation of the fence. I would just suggest that it would make more sense to me to add just two more weeks and go with maybe October 15th or pick some other date that is in the calendar that's near that so that they have actually 30 days to do all the plantings and have everything in place.
Mrs. Fanner?
Thank you. I'm not sure who I direct this to. Maybe it's Mr. Bemis. Mr. Bemis, the ADA parking I have issues with, but that's something you can determine at a later date as a former member of the ADA committee. The planting on Quarterville Road, the tree or the bush in the center? I'm not sure that that's a good idea pulling out into that speed of traffic on Quarterville Road.
We were just trying to get some semblance of trees, but shrubbery would probably make more sense there, yes.
Moving around on the site, coming in off of Woodland Road? The only place you can move around on the site is on that side of the parking lot. You cannot get over to the garages without getting back onto Quarterville Road. So I'd be more comfortable with you removing the four spaces between the green space. There's no way you can get back to the other side without getting onto Quarterville Road. That's just my suggestion.
That's okay. What I'd like to explain was that we were looking at what would be the car portion of this, the sales portion of this, and what would be the repair portion of this. And I didn't see these two necessarily linking up. I saw them as separate.
Excuse me, sir. You don't need to stand. You can sit back down.
But that's what I was doing for separation and just getting him, you know, the cars.
And the other reason I'm suggesting removing them, I'm concerned about the turning radius, pulling out of those two spaces closest to the old pump stations, backing in.
Okay.
I don't think you have it. There is a dumpster down there after, I was down there today. Where would that be on the site?
Yeah, then good observation on your part because we didn't put a provision for that. Obviously, we'd have to dedicate one of those parking spaces. So I could rework this area. So I accomplished both what you're outlining and have a spot for that. I'd want to screen it.
Yeah, well, that was my next point. But if there is a dumpster on site, it needs to be screened from the abutters.
It may be better in this position on the site just because I don't want to put it on this side. There is a residential abutter here. There's one here, but I can screen it adequately there. So I'll look at that.
And there's two other concerns. There's a garage door opening next to the ADA striping. Will that be closed, permanently closed? Because that was in conflict with the ADA striping and the parking.
Right. The access to that door with that is, I'll relocate the areas.
It's a garage opening. It's not.
I'll relocate the space.
And your footnote on the plan where it says proposed vinyl coated chain, it says chain link fence. But in the ledger, it's a panel fence. I'm sorry to the.
Oh, all right.
So we're talking panel fence. We're not talking?
Talk to Walter about that tomorrow.
No, no.
No, it's a panel fence. We wanted it for blocking visibility to the abutter.
I applaud you.
And actually, that will be the same fence we use for the dumpster enclosure, just so you know.
I'll be using the same type of panel fence.
So we'll be hot topping the gravel?
Yes.
Will we be resurfacing the whole?
I think at some point this success.
You're striping it, so I'd assume you'd have to be doing something.
When I go by there now, it looks a lot better to me just going by the site. I think with these improvements, it'll look even better. And Mr. Aswad will see that his business program is going to get better. If he makes it better, people will come and he'll be able to afford to repave the entire site. I just don't think that's realistic in the timeline that we're dealing with right now.
No, it was a question.
Because that would be a greater expense.
It wasn't a condition, it was a question.
Okay, I would anticipate that he would because.
And we're talking vehicles only on this site. Not boats, nothing, no trailers.
I have nothing to talk to you about boats this evening.
Well, that's what the license is. Is that what we're talking about? Just vehicles?
Okay. I made it clear we weren't talking about boats.
Okay. I'm just asking.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
And this may be a question for you, sir, but is the business part of the Better Business Bureau of Massachusetts? Is it, is there, you know, does he submit anything to Better Business Bureau? Are there comments from citizens, a place where they can go and those are made public, either for or against?
I, first time I've ever posed that question, not only for this, but in other, for, I don't know that answer. So I'm not going to speculate. But with the amount of social media and the way that people can readily comment on anything these days, I imagine they would. And if, I think if someone doesn't live up to their obligations, whether it's repair or whether they sell a used car, it's known fairly quickly. I do know that they back up all the work that they do. And part of, part of the Class II license is to post a bond for any type of complaints. It's one of the statutory requirements. Better Business Bureau, I just don't know, is there?
Something that I would strongly encourage. I mean, I've gone on it myself to look at businesses and what commentary people have. You know, I've heard, I will say, not a lot of great things. To be kind about the past business operations there, it has been a significant eyesore. There's a pathway forward to improving that I can see on paper. But unless I, you know, I'm confident that there's a firm commitment and that resources are available and will be expended and, you know, work to be completed by a date certain. Or if we were to provide a license now, if those conditions were not met to the satisfaction of the building inspector by a date certain, that any conditional license would immediately be revoked and/or voluntarily turned over without, you know, requests for additional, you know, extensions. You know, that's something that I would want to see from the owner. I, you know, it, too many times that, you know, this property has become, come before this board and plan's been put in place and then extensions were asked for. Another one, another one, and nothing is met. And, you know, I, to the point made earlier, it's time. Either make a significant commitment, stick to it and stick to, you know, operating an exceptionally favorable business on behalf of the entire town of Southborough and in particular that area of our community or move out.
I know and I understand there's been a long history. There's been some trying times. And I do know that working with town council, when I agreed to become involved, and I know there was a court process mentioned, those orders, those were agreed orders. It wasn't something that we went and wanted to battle the town about. And I talked with the client and I talked with the property owner. And I said, the real way to do this is to, you know, start fresh. Let me talk with town council and the building inspector. And we sat down with them and decided on a plan. It's, it is not, that site is difficult from a commercial standpoint. It's not in a heavily, it's a heavily traveled area, but it's not Route 9. But we're not here to make excuses. We're here to set out and finish the roadmap we started with, which is improve the site. I think we were here.
Thank you, council. You don't need to go back over the whole history. I think we're all very familiar with it.
But we want to move forward and that's why we're here committed. And I understand we don't take the comments lightly. We take them very seriously and want to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shea.
So of the 24 spaces that are being provided, what is the breakdown between spots reserved for new cars for sale, parking for employees, parking for cars that are in for maintenance, et cetera? Is there a breakdown of that that I can get a sense of?
The used cars for sale would be on that north side. It would be approximately 12 spaces.
So there's 10 on that side. Is that the number?
And then two on the other side. The others for repair. And it's not as though the spots are always used all the time. Because cars come in and they come out and there's open spaces. But dedicating that north side fence mostly to what would be available for sale is really that, that's the primary section. Because it's off to the side. It's not in the active area where cars pull in and out.
So I guess for the license, are they asking for, and this is the first time that I'm exposed to this. So I apologize if I'm going through stuff that's been asked before. But does the license limit the number of cars for sale at any one time? Is that a condition that we can impose or not impose?
Yes.
Okay. The, so you had mentioned as well that the island will need to come out at some point in time? The pump, the old pump island?
Concrete pad.
The concrete pad?
Yeah, I think if he was going to do a repayment project, that's what I would ask.
Are there underground tanks on site? They have all been removed?
They've all been. So all the tanks have been removed to my knowledge.
Okay. And were there any wells installed to monitor anything that need to be maintained as part of this or?
I know our survey crew did locate some and they're shown on the plan, but I'm not sure how many. So the ones that were visibly, we were visible to the ground space, we did locate as part of our survey work.
So we'd be able to, if there is a requirement to continue to monitor those?
I am sure he's responsible to do some continuing monitoring, yes.
And with the improvements that you're making to the site and the expansion of the paved area, are there upgrades that you need to do or introduce a stormwater collection system to capture runoff on site?
Yeah, typically, we would introduce a stormwater management plan. In the case of this facility being a brown, what I would consider like a brownfield site where there's been underground tanks, the last thing we want to do is actually filter more water in. So in putting in that gravel area and making it pavement, I mean, essentially that gravel area is acting like a paved surface. There's a little bit of permeability that does go on in that zone. We'd be eliminating that portion of it. We are creating some green spaces that don't exist today. Those are being offset one-to-one. Fairly close, but not, I wouldn't say they're one-to-one. There may be a slight increase in impervious area on the site when we're done, but not substantially.
And do we know, does this require a submittal to Conservation Commission at all? Are there any resource areas?
There's no resource area here, no.
Or no buffer zone impacts?
No. And the alteration would really just be, it's basically stabilization. I'm stabilizing that gravel area and I am providing the landscaping along the perimeter that doesn't exist today. So that actually would be better stormwater protection along Woodland Road and along Quarterville in those sections where we are creating the islands because that doesn't exist today.
I appreciate that what's shown here is a vast improvement over what's been there historically. But I think I would support a longer deadline and for a few thousand more, repave the whole thing. Do it now, get the island out of there and then you're done. And you're not coming back in a year. I know it's not your money.
I know.
But.
Just want to be realistic with what I think P and H management can handle.
If you have hot top and pavers there already, just let them go. If you have, if you have hot top and pavers there already, just let them go. And you're gonna, and, and to Mrs. Faniff's suggestion about reworking those parking spaces-
I, I think I could do that.
Then you have less pavement to put down.
Right, right.
That's it, okay.
Let me just, Mr. Aswad, direct my comments initially to you, sir. Essentially, you've been operating without a Class II license at that location for over a decade. The variance that you have now is somewhat undefined, and there are violation letters in your folder. You have your own folder, sir, that go back to 1997. Three prior building inspectors, in addition to the current one, have been trying to get you into compliance for a long time. So your, your efforts at compliance and your ability to work with the town is not something that one should aspire to. I don't know if you're on strike three, but you're getting close there in terms of your compliance with, with town requests and, and, and building inspect, working with the building inspector. So what I would recommend, and, and I'll open it up, this recommendation to this board, and to the extent there's anyone in, in attendance that would like to come, and I think you can hear, sir, the concerns that the board has with regards to this particular piece of property, that if we are inclined to issue a Class II license, it's going to be heavily conditioned, and it's going to be subject to strict enforcement by the building inspector. In fact, I'd like town council, with the assistance of the building inspector, to draft the conditions of the Class II license such that enforcement of a violation will be swift and immediate and without, not subject to interpretation. And I also would like a date, I recommend a date, be in that condition of the Class II license for the completion, not the beginning, but for the completion of these improvements. You've got a good location here, you've got a good thing going, and, sir, I can only try to persuade you that now is the time to comply with this license to the extent this board is inclined to issue it with those conditions of compliance. That's what I would recommend to this board. I think we've all spoken, we've all spoken very clear about our concerns, that we ask the building inspector and town council to issue a Class II license with specific conditions and specific date for performance, and we'll see how you go from there. A sort of probation, if you will, to see if those compliance, you meet those compliance dates, and you get this area looking something that you could be proud of, as well as the town. Because I, I can, I can assume that you have issues yourself about the way that this property looks. That's, those are my comments, sir, and as I said, I direct them to you, because your attorneys have done everything they can for you. Your engineer has done everything that he can do for you, and now it's up for you, up to you, sir, for you to do what needs to be done. Mr. Morris.
Thank you. Good evening, Don Morris, Planning Board. When this plan was first brought up, it was referred to as a site plan. As you know, the Planning Board has full site plan review authority, and then we have minor site plan review. So my question is, is this a site plan? I believe it is because of the, the nature of the plan and the questions that you've asked relative to parking, landscaping, drainage, lighting, all that stuff is part of a site plan approval. So if this is a site plan, or if it's not a site plan, I'd like to have somebody explain why it's not. We had a similar situation on Route Nine with Iron Horse Tractor, where there was sales of vehicles, and then there was service of vehicles. And the building inspector at that time worked with the, the operator of the, of the site, and developed a plan very similar to this. However, I think it was Mrs. Faniff asked which of these parking spaces is, are designated for sale of vehicles, and which are, are not. And that actually was an issue at, at a similar site. So again, if this is not a site plan, I'd like to have it explained to, to me why it's not. And if it is, then perhaps it would be resolved under minor site plan review. Thank you.
Mr. Cipriano.
And, Mr. Chairman, it's a good question, but this is not a zoning-style site plan. The, the Board of Selectmen of any municipality or a city council have the ability to request a plan of the design of whatever they license, whether it's a, a pub and the interior flooring, the spaces, the number of seats, or a Class II license. Some boards take advantage of that, some grant Class II licenses without any plan at all. It, it is not intended to trigger any form of zoning relief or zoning review. It's an aid, it's a sophisticated aid for the Board of Selectmen as the licensing authority. So calling it a site plan i- i- is okay, but it's, it's generic. It's a, a plan of the site that is being submitted to the licensing authority, just like a, a restaurant interior plan would be submitted, or a site area plan, to determine whether or not they are to conform to the requirements of the license.
Mr. Morris does make a good point, though, to the extent that it looks like a site plan, and it walks like a site plan. You'd be whatever, you can call it whatever you want. I do think, though, that the building inspector, in, in effort with you, can work with perhaps a designee of the Planning Board in drafting these conditions. And they should be strict conditions in terms of number of vehicles, et cetera, such that enforcement from our building inspector can be unambiguous.
Using town resources that way, that, that's fine. That makes a lot of sense.
Anyone else?
What kind of, if, if a license was granted to sell vehicles, what kind of training is required for that? Who knows? Who knows the answer to that?
You say training?
Training, certification, licensing. Who would be selling, who would actually be the one selling vehicles there? Are they trained? Is there consumer protection, training that is provided? Nothing? You could just, just get a license, and you can get, get a, a mass state form and start selling cars?
No, as, as the attorney had stated prior, they need to post a bond.
That's it?
That's, that's the only requirement with the license.
It's, it's regulated by statutes. I want to make sure it's on.
Yes.
It's regulated by statute, it's the oversight by the Attorney General's Office, and the, the person, the principal licensed here sells, it's part of the repair of the vehicles. If they, if they have a repair, it falls also under the Lemon Law statutes that, that required three, three times to bring it back in. So it's, it's, it's heavily regulated by statute on, on the used cars, sales, repair, any representations. The automotive industry is probably one of the most regulated industries in the state.
So is your client fully versed on what those regulations are?
He's been in the business over 40 years.
Of selling cars?
And, well, he's, he's sold cars since he had a site in Newton. His, he has worked for his brother's site in Lynn. They had a dealer's license prior to this. He's repaired automobiles. It's really meeting, really, the request, someone wants a certain vehicle, has a certain price and parameters, you try to meet the needs of the consumer.
Hey, council, and I think, Mr. Kalenda, it's, it's more about being a good neighbor.
Yes.
This is what, where he's getting to.
Is he also financing these vehicles himself?
He does not finance-
In some manner?
No.
Okay.
Sorry. What are the proposed hours of operation for the business? And would that, something to include in the license as well? I assume we have that in-
It, it is in the application.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Nothing out, out of the ordinary times. I could flip through it, but it's a nine to six.
As long as that's covered, we're, we're good. And lastly, there's no proposed lighting on the site, is there? Or is there existing lighting?
I did not identify any lighting. There is existing lighting there, and I was not making any new lighting proposals with this.
Okay.
So, I mean, it would be what's there. We're not proposing anything new.
Ms. Ms. Aselbeekian?
Desiree Aselbeekian, 137 Woodland Road. Thank you very much for letting me speak as a member of the community, Woodland Road. I drive by Mr. Aswad's site every day, and I just wanted to let you know, four of you know, that I came before you the last time that he was here, a couple of, few months ago now, and I was very adamantly opposed to giving a license for this site. I still have very mixed feelings as someone who, again, lives in this neighborhood and drives by it every day. I share both Mr. Kalenda and Mrs. Faniff's concerns. I think there are far too many vehicles on this site. I think 12 cars selling. I think, I don't recall that that was in the discussion at last meeting. Perhaps things have changed, and that's obviously up to your purview in granting this license. I think that's far too many. And also, too, I, I did speak with Mr. Aswad, and he spoke with me shortly after the last meeting. I still have concerns about his sign on the property in the corner relative to sight line. He, he tried to paint it a different color. He, he did try to resolve some of the issues that I had. But you still cannot see well when you're coming out of Woodland, looking to the right, looking really quick to the left with all the commuter traffic coming, coming down from the commuter rail. If, you know, you've really got to look very hard so you make sure you don't get biffed, quite frankly. And now that I see the proposed site that Mr. Bemis has engineered, and I see, again, the, the plants, and then on top of that, that section of plants there in the middle, the fact that you were going to have access from Woodland to Corderville, and you have to go straight through to get out, now I, coming out of the other, you know, Woodland and Corderville, when I'm looking to the right, I'm now going to be competing with cars trying to pull out of the site and a tree. It's a, it's a very, very tricky corner. It's a very tricky intersection, because as you go toward the T station, there is a curve in the road. This is what, you know, I'm not opposed to anybody running a successful business, making money. That's, that's not what I'm opposed to here. I'm opposed to safe, the lack of a safety plan for this site, so that every time I drive by that, that intersection, which is every day, and I've been doing this for 34 years of my life, I've lived on that street for 34 years, and it continues to be a problem. And that's my number one complaint.
Let me just ask whether or not this problem can be solved or addressed. Mr. Cipriano, I believe this would be a question to you, is whether or not we could make the license contingent upon a minor site plan review by the Planning Board. Because, again, we're getting into areas with regards to lighting, signage, sight of view, line of view, all areas clearly much better handled by a board other than this board.
That is discretionary with the board. It's not required.
I understand.
If you feel more comfortable administratively, you can use any resource you choose, within reason, to help you address whether or not a, a license should be granted.
Thank you very much for your consideration of that. I really would encourage the board to obviously make any improvements contingent, you know, a license contingent upon improvements. And I would also urge the board to send this to the Planning Board to have all of these things looked at, particularly the safety concerns of the site. Thank you very much.
What, Mr. Cipriano, or Mr. Morris, what are we talking about in terms of timing or potential delay if this applicant is asked to undergo a minor site plan review?
I think that this plan needs to be, maybe have some more information put on it in order to have it looked at as minor site plan. For example, you, you know, you, you wanted to have a plan that the building inspector could enforce. Well, on this, on this particular plan, I believe, there's no designation for where the for-sale cars are or not. So the number, the location and the quantity of cars being sold is something that the zoning enforcement officer would need to have a plan that would show that. So anyway, this, it would seem that this, this plan is almost there. And then it, it could be submitted as a minor site plan. And as you know, public safety is on that Minor Site Plan Committee, DPW, the Town Planner, and as appropriate, Conservation and so on. So it's possible, I think, that once you get those experienced site plan reviewers to take a look at this, it could be done in short time and, and short money. The, the sign is an issue, I guess. The lighting would have to be looked at. I was a little bit interested in that, the, the comment about it being a brownfield and the monitoring wells. But again, those things can be looked at, and I know the Planning Board has, at times, looked at the situation and waived fees moving along. So I, I would think that this could be done concurrently. If we have a mid-October completion date, you've got the plan. It's, it's probably sufficient for some subcontractors to go in there and begin to do the work, and then probably in, in the next 30 to 60 days or shorter, have it officially approved. That helps the proponent. Now he has an official document by which he, he can operate, and the building inspector has an official document by which he can perform the enforcement.
Mr. Chairman, is it the plan of the, the Board of Selectmen to retain the jurisdiction of the review and final decision while it's under site plan review, or to make the decision with the contingents?
I think the latter. That would be my vote. It would be the latter, only because, Mr. Aswad, your file, as I mentioned, you have a file in town. It's not something you should be proud of, but I, I just don't want it to continue to grow. And although this may not sound initially to you like a good idea, I do think in the long run, it benefits you insofar as you then clearly have defined responsibilities. And we all, everyone then knows what needs to be done. My only concern, Mr. Morris, is, is the delay attendant to this additional step.
I would think it could be done concurrently. I, I don't want to disagree with council, but-
When you say concurrently, we could issue the Class II license contingent upon the, what we were talking about earlier in addition to approval of a minor site plan review?
I think so, because this plan has already been officially submitted-
Counsel?
As, as part of the, the permit.
Counsel, it's a bit of a curveball. Do you have any thoughts or concerns about that process?
If, microphone, sir.
I, I think that if, if there was a conditional approval, and you wanted a site plan review, and that was a step in the, in the, in the direction that we intend ahead, that we're, why we're here, then if there's a, a hearing schedule, I could talk to Mr. Morris and move that forward. It would make sense. I, I don't, you know, I don't, the, the use of the brownfield site, maybe that's just terminology for, because there were tanks there, but there's never been any DEP or any site remediation or any, anything of that nature. So I think we could move it along at a, at a fairly quick pace, especially if we're talking, you know, we're in a 90-day timeframe, I think, with what we were talking about, and I think that could be accomplished. And if that would be satisfactory, then I think we, we should move in that direction. I wouldn't be opposed.
Yeah, the only, the only quick point I want to make, to my knowledge, on our investigation, there is no brownfields issue. The, the requirements that the tanks be removed and the pumps were fire safety issues. So DEP was never involved in the site. These were issues with the fire chief that were also enforced, and subsequently, the pumps removed and the tanks removed. and subsequently the pumps removed and the tanks removed.
Mrs. Faniff.
I, I do not want to see this delayed. It needs to be buttoned up somehow and put onto the fast track. By delaying it, we run the risk of the asphalt companies being shut down, the hot top not being done, and all of the other things that go along with that. I'm not a professional, I probably am not speaking out of turn, but I know there's, a certain point you're not going to get hot top delivered. So the longer we stretch it out, we run the risk of seeing this completed so that it's up and running and the neighbors are satisfied. And if there's a fee, I think we need to waive it if we're going to send it back to, for a planning, minor site plan review.
So I got a question on the waiver of the fee. So I understand it's something that may be done, but if this is something that the board thinks is necessary, and that actually in the end is, you know, could benefit the applicant, I don't know why we would make any recommendation that it be waived.
If it's a minor site plan review, if I understood, Mr. Morris, there would be no fees, and I believe he even suggested it.
He did, but I think it's within their purview, not, not ours, is...
It is, but I, I want to see this done.
Suggest, you recommend.
No, I, I am recommending.
It's up to them whether or not they want to, right?
Actually, I'm not, I'm not sure this is a formal site plan review, this is a little tool that we need to make a decision. I don't think we'd even need to be talking about fees.
Why don't, why don't we do this then? Why don't we instruct the council and the building inspector to prepare a draft conditional Class II license, conditioned with what the building inspector needs for enforcement purposes, conditioned in part on what the planning board is concerned about, and also conditioned upon a, a site, minor site plan review. One of the concerns I have, Mr. Morris, is that if some of the conditions are, that are in this conditional license, the planning board is going to live with those and not say, well, we don't want that. In other words, we all have to be working together, moving down the same path together, while the site plan review is being conducted, and I think that is what you suggested. So is that, is that a clear directive, is everyone comfortable with that? And I think, Mr. Aswad, between now and when this all is finalized, your efforts at complying with the conditions that the building inspector and council prepare will go a long way in hopefully closing out this matter such that, I assume you don't enjoy appearing before us every other month, and maybe you don't have to appear before us again. Of course, you're always welcome to, but I assume it's not on the top of your list of things to do.
Is, if there were a revocation down the road, if a license were granted and there were a revocation, is that appealable? And if so, can they, can that be, can they waive that, in anticipatory waiver? An affirmative waiver of a right to appeal?
I would say, I would say that a revocation would be appealable. We still have a jurisdictional case in the Superior Court, so the Superior Court's kind of watching to see what the Board of Selectmen do. To ask an individual to waive a right of appeal, I, I'm not completely comfortable with that, respectfully. I'm not sure that that would withstand the test.
Okay. I just, it's, it's been going on a long time, and I just foresee a few months down the road it happening again, and another waiver requested, and extension for a longer period of time requested, and we're right back to where we are.
It is, pointing out again what Attorney McGauley said, we filed for preliminary injunction. Instead of having to go to the adversary hearing, it was agreed to. A certain jurisdiction stays with the court, I think Attorney McGauley knows and has reflected that he needs to comply, his client needs to comply with the conditions that you set, because this is the last stop, there's no place left to really go. So I suspect that these things will be done and we won't have to return for further adjudication.
Okay.
Mr. Morris, without handcuffing your board, could you somehow communicate this to be on a priority list with your board? And with the objective of Mr. Aswad's date in mind, maybe we can have everything accomplished by the date that he was talking about earlier?
Actually, if it goes, if it goes as a minor site plan, the planning board doesn't see it. The town planner gets the plan, so we'd ask Mr. Bemis to submit the plan with the appropriate minor site plan application to the town planner, and then she assembles the minor site plan committee, could be the next day, could be the same day, and they would review it.
Okay.
It, it may never get to the planning board.
Okay.
That's why, that's why that, that provision exists, to take care of relatively small things like this.
And could I just ask the building inspector to just prepare a brief memo, one or two lines, to update us at our next meeting in August as to the status or the progression between now and our next meeting? Thank you.
Anything else?
Does Mr. Aswad, counsel, Mr. Bemis, any questions or any?
No, I'm fine.
Anything unclear as to the direction of this board? Counsel, are you set? Do you have any further questions? Does your client have any questions? If so, I'd like to hear them now so that we, we all leave here with a clear understanding of the path to take.
Thank, thank you for your time and comments, and I think it was very helpful, and we'll wrap this up and keep to the schedule.
Great, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bemis.
We're 20 minutes behind, which will be difficult to make up, but... Which one? Yes, we want to continue this hearing, this Class II hearing, yeah, keep it open. Interviews to fill committee vacancies, there are four items on the agenda. I understand one of the committee applicants, the municipal technology committee member, is unable to be here this evening.
That's correct.
So we have one applicant for the Metropolitan Area Planning Council and the Metro West Regional Collaborative. I assume everyone has seen in their packet the application, Mr. Girlandino. In correspondence with me, I indicated that it was not necessary for him to be here tonight because I did not think that this board would have any issue with his appointment, given his long dedication and commitment in volunteerism to this town. I think he would be a particularly well-suited member of the community to represent the town at these two committees/councils/collaboratives. He is present, to the extent anyone has any questions, or to the extent that he would like to make any comment. So I'll open it up to the board if anyone has any comments, questions, or, or, or any concerns.
Since he is here, no, I too would like to echo what you said, Mr. Rooney, thank you. Sal, for all the service you've given to our town and clearly still willing to give more of your own personal time to benefit our town, I agree with Mr. Rooney and would look forward to, you know, appointing you tonight.
Anyone on board have any questions?
I have no questions, he's more than qualified.
No questions at all.
I'd like to thank is my wife, because I wouldn't be here if I didn't have her support.
That was given, that was a part of the assumption that we were operating with. So do we, should we take a separate vote on that, or should we just?
I would take a separate vote.
Motion, Mr. Semino.
So Chairman, I move to appoint Mr. Salvatore Girlandino to the Metropolitan Area Planning Council.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Chairman, I move we appoint Salvatore Girlandino to the Metro West Regional Collaborative.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Any interest in the Technology Committee, Mr. Girlandino? Ms. Russian, any interest? No?
Do you have a question?
Yes, I have a question on the, on the, I'm the MAPC representative, I think it's alternate that was...
It is.
And you said representative. And then the Metro West Regional Collaborative, he would be the selectman designee and the planning board designee. So it's clear for people who they, what roles they're serving, that's all.
Do you want me to redo it? Let's redo it.
Sure.
All right, I'm going to move that we vacate the appointment we just made and, and appoint Salvatore Girlandino as the alternate member of the Metropolitan Area Planning Council.
There is a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to move to vacate the most recent appointment to the collaborative and move to appoint Mr. Salvatore Girlandino as the plant, as the selectman's designee to the Metro West Regional Collaborative.
And a hearty second, Mr. Semino.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Again.
As I mentioned, we do not have the candidate here for the Municipal Technology Committee, so we are going to continue that. Mr. Purville?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and for the zoning board of appeals, we have one alternate position available, and I understand we have two candidates.
Yes, that's correct, we have Mr. David Williams and Mr. Donald Carotti, who I believe both of them are here this evening.
Okay. Gentlemen, why don't you step up, you may ask some questions, as you may or may not know. I think it's a unanimous position of this board that the zoning board of appeals is one of the most important boards in town. So we want to make sure that we are comfortable in our appointment, and it's generally a longer-term appointment than some of our other committees. So I want you to assume for a moment that we don't know anything about you, and we don't want to know everything about you, but what we would like to know about you is why you think you're qualified and what you will bring to the ZBA.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Why do I think I'm qualified? I am a mechanical engineer, I graduated from WPI, got a master's degree from Northeastern. I've been working in the engineering field for now, what would that make it, 30 years? I've had an interest in building in general for a long time now. I have served on very, as a volunteer, mostly through sporting organizations in town. I've served not only as a coach, but I've been on the basketball board, youth, South Park youth basketball board. So I've been in a position to, you know, need to, you know, be involved in, you know, decision-making to a certain extent within town. I can tell you my motivation for doing it. I grew up in a small town, and my parents and my two brothers have all volunteered to be part of the town government. So it does feel like it's probably a good time for me to be able to do that. What do I think I would bring to the board? I think, I believe I'm fair-minded. I think, based on the position that I have at work and the positions I've had, you know, as a volunteer in town, you know, it's kind of shaped me to be, hopefully somewhat emotionless about certain decisions. You know, I don't have an axe to grind of any sort. So I think that's probably the biggest quality, is I think I can look at something relatively objectively, you know, listen to the merits. I know you said you didn't want me to give you the whole story, but just my position at Analog Devices makes me have to consider a lot of things from a lot of different factions. And so it is sort of a big part of my job to weigh what everybody is really after and try to do what's in the best interest of the company.
So it's, it's a judicial board, so you have to remove yourself from extraneous influences and extraneous sources and make the decision or make a vote based upon the evidence that's presented to you, both in the testimony and in the documents. Have you had occasions in the past to be in that type of a position or find yourself having to make decisions in that manner?
No, I really don't have a history.
Okay, what about the time commitment? I understand, I appreciate the basketball commitment in terms of volunteerism, but I make the assumption, and I don't know what your basketball schedule is, but I make the assumption that this is going to be a bit more time-intensive. Do you have available time to commit to reviewing documents and participate in meetings? Some of the volumes, some of the documents quite voluminous in nature.
Yeah, I, I think I actually am in that position. My youngest child just graduated from high school, so I do find myself with a little bit more of a gap. I think if anything, this would probably be the time in my life where I have the most available time to dedicate to reviewing documents and attending the meetings.
Okay, and do you know anything about Mr. Carotti, the gentleman who is also applying to be the alternate? Do you know anything about him? And if you do, what would be your highest recommendation as to why we would appoint him over you?
Well, that's a little bit of a tricky position to put me in, if you don't mind me saying.
Yeah, I ask that for a reason, yeah.
I, I was here with Mr. Carotti when we came to the planning board, and what I know is he's had an awful lot of experience with zoning and with town government. And I did sort of come up and say, I certainly can't match him in terms of his experience. So I, that's about as much as I could say.
Well, that's being fair and objective, and that's important, so that's the reason I asked that question, thank you. Any?
I'll open it up to the board if you have any questions. Mrs. Faniff.
Mr. Williams, have you, you must be aware of the two applicants before the zoning board over the last 12 months? Have you been following any of those applicants?
Yeah, I am aware that there's been some hot topics that you've had to wrestle with, and I think at the last zoning board meeting, one of the members said, well, you're, you're just in time. We've taken care of some of the hottest topics. And I would have, I'm probably going to blank on exactly what the names of them are, but I know there's been one on the, on the west end of town, development there that the neighbors are very concerned about regarding business development there and, and some of the housing units. I'm also aware of, you know, for lack of a better term, the house where the, it's famous for the vanilla extract inventor. I know that went certainly back and forth quite a bit, and yes, I did, you know, kind of follow up on what the outcome was there.
All right, the reason I'm asking that is the volume of work and the commitment to have those very large applications before the board, so you're aware that they have been reviewing?
Yeah, I was aware that it's been going on for quite a while, yes.
And no conflicts that you're aware of?
I, no conflicts that I'm aware of, I have no interest in any building or businesses really within town, so.
Thank you.
Sir, where would you fall on the spectrum? So you got business, you got developers and economic development, business within town, you have rights and concerns of homeowners and citizens, are you right in the middle? Do you, do you think we're at where the town needs to be in terms of development? Do you think we need a little bit more, a little bit less, or do you have an opinion?
I mean, in terms of development, I certainly don't think we're overdeveloped. I don't know that I would, I would try to characterize myself as probably somewhere in the middle. But, you know, having said what I just did, I could see, like I said, that more development wouldn't necessarily be a negative on the town, depending on the type of development, obviously.
And other than baseball, excuse me, basketball and soccer, I know that takes up a lot of time. I do baseball, Mrs. Semino and Mr. Rooney have done a lot of baseball, those are big commitments. Are there other things that you've volunteered before in town, or would this be your next foray into public service?
This would really be my next foray. I did, I volunteered for the Main Street Committee, which I thought that topic was very interesting. Quite honestly, I didn't really probably put my best foot forward in offering myself. But no, there hasn't been any other volunteering that I've done in town.
All right, thank you, sir.
So first of all, I'd like to thank you for stepping up and volunteering, certainly at the stage of your life where kids are leaving the house and all that, there's not a lot of people that then focus their energy on getting involved in town activities and committees, so thank you for volunteering. So I know that there are a number of committees that do have openings, and I'm just curious if you could speak to what it was about the zoning board that attracted you to that open position?
I would say it's, it's, it still goes back to what my interest in, in building and structures and general, you know, development has been for quite some time. So, you know, in a way, it was, it's an opportunity in that there was a, there was a position available there. But I would, that, that's probably, you know, the heart of it, is that development and building has been an interest of mine for, for quite a while.
Thank you.
Mr. Semino.
Mr. Williams, have you, did you come to the conclusion that you wanted to apply for this?
for this opening sort of organically, or did somebody suggest it to you, hey, you might be good for this, or, you know? How did that come about?
It was suggested, actually, by a friend of mine that that might be a good opportunity, so.
I didn't hear you, by who?
By Karen Finelli.
Ah, okay. Are you familiar with or friendly with or acquainted with any of the other current ZBA members?
I'm sorry, the ZBA members?
Yes.
No, I'm not really familiar with them. I think I've met at least Andrew previously, but generally, and actually, I have met Lee in the past involving basketball quite some time ago.
All right. Thank you. One final question. Will you ever have, will you have a problem being in the minority? In other words, you're asked to participate in a particular matter, and your other members come out with one position and you come out with the other position. Do you have any hesitation or concern about articulating your position and maintaining that position? Or would you feel compelled, based upon perhaps their tenure or their length of service, to just accede to their position and go with them?
I would like to think that I would be able to hold my position. I don't want to go into examples, but I've certainly been in a position before where I'd been in the minority, and I can respectively object, but the will of the.
Very good, sir. Again, thank you very much. Appreciate your willingness to step up, and we'll be voting shortly, so.
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thanks, Carotti.
Thank you.
Am I pronouncing your name correct? Carotti?
I'm right there.
I'm right there? Okay. So you had the benefit of listening to some of the questions that were asked earlier. We may ask you the same ones, we may not, but can you give us a?
That's okay.
Hold on one second. Hold on one second. Can you just give us a read, digest, version of who you are and why you would, you would, why you would be an asset to the ZBA?
Well, my name is John Carotti, and I live at Three Pine Hill Road, South Row, and I've been there for 21 years, and have been interested in town government since I've been there. I think one of the biggest assets that I have, that I can offer to the town is the experience that I've had and municipal experience, and really the leadership experience that I've had in many other positions, whether they be in the community or service or lending service to different organizations and so forth. So, you know, those are my two big qualities, I think. My municipal experience of 34 years.
Yep.
And my leadership experience, which, and when I say leadership, you know, I say that I have to sit in many cases and many places that I've sat with boards, commissions, other people, and the ability to sit, listen, take a part, and take a, make a decision and so forth, when you're sitting with different boards or different commissions or different people. Because all people, you know, are, they have a lot of different opinions, and you really have to respect, when you sit down with somebody, you really have to respect the opinions of others.
So, excuse me, sir. So you've been in town a long time. I assume you know a lot of people in town?
I do.
And I assume you know a lot of developers in town?
I know of developers in the city.
Do you have any relationships with those developments?
I do not.
Hold on, whether they be business relationships, personal relationships?
No.
Anything of that nature?
The only thing that I, you know, I'm going to suggest to the board or make known to the board is that I am a real estate agent.
Yes, we saw that in your material.
And I have, currently, I have two properties in the town that I'm the agent for. One is 77 Turnpike Road, and one is the Capasso Farms.
Okay.
So I want to make that clear, that, you know, I do, I am the agent, and certainly being around municipal government, I know that if anything ever arose that those two properties were involved, that sitting on a board or commission, that I would have to disqualify myself.
So you heard Mr. Williams give his brief presentation and respond to some of the questions that we asked him. Why do you think he'd be a better candidate for us to appoint?
Why would he be a better candidate?
Yes, sir, yes.
I don't really think he'd be a better candidate to me.
Okay, all right. If you had to speak in support of him, what would you say?
Well, speak in support of him. He seems like he's, he's a very educated individual. He seems like he has interest in the town, and I applaud him for his work with youth, which is very good. I worked with youth myself for years and years, and it's always difficult to work with youth, but I applaud him for all of that, and I certainly think that he would probably be someone that should get involved in town government, whether it be the Zoning Board or maybe he should start at another board and then work himself up.
Why don't we go the other way this time? Mr. Semino.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm very curious. I'm going to take your question, Mrs. Faniff. You could take mine if you want. Recent actions, decisions by the ZBA. Take one and tell me your thoughts on the issue and how it was decided and what you thought about it.
You know, of course, the biggest one, I guess, is the apartment units that were proposed, and I followed those a little bit. You know, I didn't watch the whole process, but whether they be that particular issue or any other issue, in order to make a judgment on what is, you know, good for the town of South Row, you know, you have to sit and listen to the issue and then, and try to make an intelligent decision on it, whether, I think whether it's good for the town, whether it hurts the town, whether it's good for the tax base, whether it's good for employment, and the neighbors, to make sure that the neighbors are involved, so.
All right. Thank you.
Obviously, Mr. Shea, you get to go at the same time, whichever way we go down the line, so.
Okay. So again, thank you for volunteering for this as well. I'm just curious, I'll ask the same question. So what interested you in applying for the Zoning Board position now, maybe as opposed to in years past, with the length of time that you've been in town and other committees that you've been on? So just curious why, what interested you in this position?
Well, I knew that the position was open, and I knew that there were members on the board that thought maybe I would be qualified for the position, so I thought about it. I have the time. You know, I was told that regardless if you're a member or an associate member, you have to attend all the meetings, which I have the time. So, you know, it was just a decision that, in thinking about it, in the interest that I have in the town of South Row. You know, South Row has some, South Row has some areas that certainly are up for development and so forth, and, you know, maybe I'd like to be a part of those if they comply and if everything is helpful to the town.
Thank you.
Sir, as I asked Mr. Williams, where do you lie in that spectrum of developers and economic development in our town and homeowners? You've got, obviously, developers who have, who own land that they bought for, you know, because they want to develop it. You've got homeowners who happen to buy that land who don't want to see it developed. Do you fall on other end of that spectrum? Are you square in the middle? How do you approach those issues?
Well, you know, if someone, if a developer has bought a piece of land and he's with the intention of developing it, and he thinks that he has the right to develop that land, and if he presents a case that shows that that particular piece of land should be developed and the reasons that it should be developed, whether it's zoned, whether it's business village, whether it's Route 9, whether it's going to bring taxes to the town, certainly the town needs taxes, which is a big item. So all of those things, you have to take all of those things in consideration. And then, of course, the neighbor and the neighborhood is very important, because you just don't want to develop a piece of land and step all over the neighbors and so forth, and, you know, they have to have a say, and they have to have a good say in how you develop that particular parcel of land. You know, South Row has, you know, South Row right now, I don't, I'm guessing, but it probably has, you know, four or five miles or six miles of Route 9, and, you know, it's probably going to be, Route 9 is probably going to be a focus of development in the future, so, you know, you just have to take everything into consideration. The developer, the land, the town, and what it does for the town.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Carotti, welcome back again. CHOPSY is up and running again, which you're aware of. You're a member of CHOPSY. We're energized. CHOPSY makes recommendations to the ZBA on affordable housing and their plans before the ZBA, any 40B projects that we might be able to initiate for affordable housing. I have concerns where we make recommendations, when I say we, I'm talking about CHOPSY, to the ZBA, that having you on both committees, I see it as a conflict. I've asked other members in the past to make a decision as to which committee they prefer to serve on, and if you were asked to remove yourself from CHOPSY or be appointed to the ZBA because of the time commitments of both, which one would you prefer?
Well, one of the reasons that I submitted the application is that I was told that there's no conflict between the two committees. Now, are you saying there is a conflict?
I'm saying CHOPSY makes recommendations to the ZBA on 40B projects.
Well, if, you know, I can't say that, what recommendation I would make. I enjoy being appointed to CHOPSY.
Who told you there was no conflict?
Between the two?
Yes.
When we were at the application here at the ZBA, it was said here at that meeting that there was no conflict between the two.
Oh, before the ZBA? When you were before the ZBA, but not from this board?
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, Mrs. Faniff, go ahead.
No, because in the past, I've asked two other residents in town to step off of CHOPSY when they were appointed to the ZBA, and I would be comfortable doing that again if that is the will of this board, but I personally think there's a conflict where we make recommendations to the ZBA.
Ask the same question I asked Mr. Williams, which is, and I think you already half answered it. You said somebody had suggested to you you might be a good candidate for this position. Same question, you know, who is that?
For this, for the ZBA?
Yes.
Well, I talked to the chairman, and he thought I would be a good candidate.
Okay.
So that's one, so.
Okay. And, well, that half answers the last question, which is, are you familiar with it? Do you acquainted with any of the current ZBA members?
Just, I don't know the second member's name, but only a couple of them.
Okay. Thank you.
So we have two candidates, two qualified candidates, something that we generally are not always confronted with. I understand that the ZBA has recommended that we interview both candidates, so they essentially passed the buck and sent you both up to us. Does anyone have a motion at this point?
I would. I'm sorry, Mrs. Faniff, go ahead.
I'll make a motion that the board appoint Mr. Carotti to the ZBA. I'm not sure what the term is to state that in my motion, but I would also suggest to the board that Mr. Carotti remove himself from CHOPSY with my motion.
Is there a second? Hearing none. Is there any other motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Mr. Williams as an alternate member of the ZBA.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor of Mr. Clender's motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Williams. You are the alternate member. Mr. Carotti, thank you very much for your interest.
Thank you.
In applying. You serve a critical position in being on CHOPSY. I don't want this to discourage you. Unfortunately, we have to make a decision, and making a decision to vote in favor of one necessarily implies voting against or not in favor of someone else, and it's nothing more than that. But again, thank you very much for your continued participation in the town's efforts, and again, Mr. Williams, congratulations.
Mr. Chairman, I have one comment that you explained to Mr. Williams that he'd been appointed, that he goes downstairs and gets filed with the town clerk's office.
Yeah, they're.
And approved, and that's so that our next meeting in a week, he'd be able to come to.
Yeah, I think you should coordinate with Mr. Bartolini to get a schedule of the meeting dates, and also the town clerk needs to swear you in. He's gone now, so you'll have to come back during business hours to get sworn in. All right? Thank you, sir. Before we go much further, Mr. Wilson, he's here on an item on number two, on page two, and unless there's an objection, I'd like to skip to that issue so that we can hear from Mr. Wilson, and so then he can then go home and watch the rest of us on television. Okay. You just want to listen? But after you listen, after you listen to this issue, would you be leaving us?
I'd say we do.
Yeah, I agree. So on page two, item number four, two, discuss appointments to the Main Street Design Working Group, and, Mr. Purple, if I'm correct, this issue comes up because Mr. Shea, after his election to the Board of Selectmen, thought it was appropriate to resign from that committee or working group despite perhaps protestations from some of us to the contrary, and Mr. Shea now believes it may be appropriate for him to continue on that group. Does that pretty much frame the issue?
Yes. So, and what I readily admit is my first political flip-flop of this, and readily admitting as well that I'm just quickly becoming Mr. Boland's favorite person this year, but, again, I had originally thought that, you know, knowing that I would have the potential to be acting on the Main Street project at this level, that it would be appropriate to have somebody else fill in on the Main Street group. In the meantime, several people on the Main Street group I have spoken with, and have indicated that, you know, really, a lot of the decision-making on that group was done a year ago, and it's now following through on decisions that had been made, and there are benefits, really keeping the seven of us together. I know Mr. Boland also has a lot of experience with that project as well, and I think he would serve that working group very well in addition. So I will leave it up to the board to see how they want to go.
Does anyone have any comments? Mrs. Faniff?
I think we tried to. I think we tried to convince him the last time we met to remain on the committee, so he's actually doing what we're asking. So, thank you.
So, again, I can see the benefits to both clearly. They both know the project quite well. One has served on the, I guess, my main point, my main thought is there's, they serve under the direction of the Board of Selectmen. Any of us can and are always encouraged to attend any of those meetings at any time and fully participate. Having an additional voice would be Mr. Boland on that committee. And I think it would benefit the town and this board to have that additional voice on that committee. And I would be in favor of, I think, obviously, both are great. I would, you know, we already have Mr. Shea right here to add Mr. Boland, I think would only benefit the town.
Mr. Semino.
I thought when, I honestly didn't realize that we had had a formal resignation that now needs to be backfilled. Did we not, do we lose anybody else from the Main Street Committee when we got to the 25% decision stage last year?
No.
No. So, I agree with Mr. Kalenda and disagree with him at the same time. I do agree that both voices are great. And I assume, I prefer not to upset the current composition of the committee, but I assume, Mr. Boland, that doesn't mean you'll, you know, you'll sort of drop out of the, the passion you've had for that project for so many years.
Well, I mean, I can make it easier if you want to just, you know, I applied back in May when Mr. Shea said he didn't want to be on the committee or didn't think he should be on the committee. I tried to convince Mr. Shea he was wrong, that he should stay on the committee. So, I'm more than willing to say, you know, my interest is more in favor of having Mr. Shea be on the committee and that stay intact. And I'm more than happy to see you just, you know, not discuss it anymore and reappoint Mr. Shea. You're not going to, you're not going to hurt my feelings.
No, but I'm more concerned about your continued investment in it. And I don't have any doubt about that unless you tell me I should.
And we see Mr. Boland at these meetings. I trust he'll be at the working group meetings, making sure that it's.
No, as I said when I, when I was on the board, it's ultimately your board's decision what happens. And the committee gives you some guidance, so. I think, I think Mr. Shea is a great person on that committee.
So, as you recall, I think it was just a matter of a handful of votes which allowed this committee to exist in the first place. At town meeting, there were many that were opposed to going forward with the project at all. And then, ultimately, just by a scant number of votes, I don't recall the number, but the number was not very great, that this committee was authorized. And then, this board took great pains to appoint individual members who we thought would best serve the representatives of the town on this important project. And although my history in town government does not span nearly as long as a number of others here, I can honestly say that, at least in my tenure, this committee has performed well beyond anyone's, and my expectation in doing everything that needed to be done to bring the community together on this project. It's a long way of saying that I don't want to tinker with it. And I'd like to keep it the way it was originally formulated. So, Mr. Boland, thank you for your comments as well. Mr. Shea, I don't know if he formally resigned, if he needs to be reappointed. But if he needs to be reappointed, then is there a motion to reappoint Mr. Shea?
There is.
There's a second?
There is.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
One more thing to do. Mr. Wilson, if you're happy to stay or make any comments if you'd like to, but.
No, we voted.
Let us know how the, let us know how the All-Star game is going.
Yeah.
Mr. Purple?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of items. And then, Mr. Ballantyne is going to take up the bulk of my report this evening. Just a couple of things. First of all, I want to welcome our new Economic Development Coordinator, Pam DiGioviani, who started today. She is going to be here working on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. So, I encourage you to have an opportunity to stop in and say hello. Her office is right down on the first floor, right near Vanessa's office. So, she's.
Call that an office?
It is now, yes. If you go take a nice look at that, it's, it's better than the office that Vanessa previously had.
That's true.
So, and so, you know, she is part-time in that. But she's excited to dig in, get to work. And she'll be working with myself, Vanessa, Dave McKay, Jennifer Burney, and the whole crew. So, again, welcome aboard. We did also receive a resignation form or notice of resignation form from Judy Buds. As a library trustee, as you may or may not know, she has been appointed by the moderator to the advisory committee along with Dorian Jazinski. So, we have two new advisory board members. We got to meet them the other evening at their meeting when they considered some year-end business that needed to be conducted. So, we thank Judy for her work on the Board of Trustees, but also, we'll be working with her moving forward as we get into some of the financial issues for the town. And we also welcome Dorian, thank her for her work on scholarship. I've been doing some work with John Parent, Facilities Manager, as to the green communities issue. We had a meeting last week with Amaresco, who is an energy services contractor. They're located in Framingham. They are one of the biggest ESCOs in this area of the country. I've worked with them previously in Ashland to do work related to becoming a green community. And we are looking at a proposal from them to conduct our, a performance audit for our energy use, which will then set our baseline, which will also then tell us how we're going to reduce it by 20% over a five-year period in order to comply with the requirement for the green communities piece. So, just wanted to let you know that that is something. We may be talking a little bit more about that. One of the nice things about working with an ESCO is that any of the projects that are defined as a result of this process usually are looked, you know, to be implemented through savings and paid for through the savings that you see in your energy budget. So, you know, if we're looking at a project, it's $200,000, we may be looking at a 10-year payback from energy savings. So, no new money coming in to pay for these improvements. But then, after the 10 years, obviously, those savings can be put back in for other improvements. And we see those moving forward. So, there are some interesting prospects to look at long-term for the community so we can see these improvements, meet our goals, and get an ongoing benefit from them. So, you'll be hearing more about this as we move forward. But I want to let you know those discussions have been happening. Now, for the centerpiece, you are the centerpiece of the report tonight. I wanted to turn this over to Brian Ballantyne. Brian has been chairing a small committee of department heads who have been looking at our town website and working with Virtual Town Hall. Brian, along with Vanessa Hale, with Dorian Ferguson, Michelle Jenkins, and Ryan Donovan, is that it? Have been, have been looking at our website, making recommendations, and working with the vendor to come up with a design. And, you know, haven't really gotten into the functionality pieces of yet. But I wanted to at least give Brian an opportunity just to give you a little bit of information. And again, not deep into the details, but some of the visual pieces. And if you have any questions or comments, he can take those back to the group to get answers and to work on things.
So, I think you all remember us going over this a few months back during the wintertime. We gave a brief update on moving forward with Virtual Town Hall. And that's actually what we did. And we began, oh, probably over a year ago, with our first little meetings with them, just to look at what they had to offer. So, this is pretty much, what I am told is the most difficult part of doing this, at least by Virtual Town Hall's experience with other towns, is the front page and how you want it set up. The group that was involved in that obviously wanted a clean look. If you see our current webpage, it's anything but this. It's probably the exact opposite. What you need to bear in mind with this slide and the next slide is not to get too focused on the picture behind. We have every intention of rotating the photos anyways. So, that's pretty much just a, that's an alternate version of that first slide. We actually like this one better. It's a little more cleaner. That picture on the first slide was a little busy with the background. So, this is, this gives you a little bit more cleaner look. As you can see, it's the highlights of what people come to a website for. You know, payments, forms, volunteer, minutes, agendas, what's coming up in the town. Very clean, just gets you into the town. You know, you can pretty much intuitively decide where do I want to go and find out from there, you know, what to do next.
Are you working with Penta at all? Or are you doing, who's doing this?
This is Virtual Town Hall, correct.
What kind of cost associated with doing this?
We had a $12,000 cost, which is, yeah, it might be even on the next slide. You're a little ahead of me. But as you can see, they funded $12,000. The advisory committee funded $12,000 earlier in the, in the calendar year. Of that $12,000, roughly eight of it is the, is the one-time startup cost. The other four is the annual, you know, support and maintenance. So, that, in that $12,000 is, I think, what we had mentioned before a few months ago about the board and committee database that the clerk's office will use. So, the, and that is listed in some of the information is the clerk's department has already been involved in migrating their board and committee data to Virtual Town Hall to integrate for the new website. So, they've actually done a lot of work when Michelle was alone down there before Jim was actually elected. So, the, this just gives a, some quick bullet points. 2000 was, we went through Virtual Town Hall. We brought it back several years later, obviously. Gail helped us a lot with maintaining that as much as we could. We've outgrown that. We need to redesign it. And I think everyone knows that's obvious. A designated from each department will maintain their page. That's the departments that will be using it, which of course, police, fire, library, the schools, and some other departments are now have their own website or have their own system set up that they don't want to move from, which is okay because we can link from our, you know, this current website to their pages that they want. So, it's not going to, you know, expose them to not having that information with us.
Are there cons for each designated for each department maintaining their page?
Drawbacks to that? Probably. I think the advantages outweigh the drawbacks, though. It gives a lot of control to the departments that want to be aggressive with using it. We do have, you know, I think we know some of the departments that'll be heavily involved. The clerks come to mind as number one. You know, I know Mr. Hagerty wants to really put a lot of information on there. Yeah. Big library, yep. The assessors come to mind. Board of Selectmen, obviously, will be using it heavily. So, so those departments that really want to utilize it can. And hopefully, we can bring, you know, and emphasize that it's important to get your information on the website and get as much as you can to, for people to see what you're doing, to use it.
Sorry.
Have there been discussions with advisory about either having a link to their site or having them brought into this?
Advisory had mentioned it at one of their meetings, yes, prior. And yes, they can, they can. It's not an issue. We haven't had further detailed conversations on how deep they want to get into that. But I don't see a problem with that at all. So, the timeline, the design, as I mentioned, was one of the most difficult things. You know, it's interesting to get a group together and try to find a design that everyone likes. However, as a reminder, it included five people. And we did a pretty good job. I'll just move it along to this point. So, the implementation takes 10 working days from the final approval of the design. So, we're almost there. The content migration is roughly a month, month and a half to get the data that we now have all on our website, which we do have a lot of data in the, in the old website. We need to migrate that over. And then, the onsite training, which is one week prior to going live, may actually be a little longer than that. That's what Virtual Town Hall was estimating. I would say a couple of weeks probably for the amount of departments and staff that we want to have available to do that. And that can be ongoing, too. We do have some resources. I know Central Office at the schools has some people that have direct experience with this type of web, website application. And they're willing to help us, so that's great if we want to take advantage of that. So, we're looking at early fall 2015 to try to do this. And I don't see a really huge issue with that. So, board and committees, I know that's a big, we know that's a big issue. We can, as I mentioned before a few months ago, or Mr. Purple may have, this, this product does have the ability to do a number of things with committee members and board members, which is a lot of, that will notify staff of when, you know, their oath is taken, when their membership is up, et cetera. Again, the clerk's office has migrated a lot of their data already. So, they're down the road a little bit. It's the ability to apply for committee vacancies online. It's a real improvement from what we have now. And again, if you remember from the presentation done a while ago, it also has the ability to tickle people who sign up or residents who sign up or anyone who signs up to get notices of meetings, committee, committee and board meetings of their interest. So, that's, that's a big plus. I think everyone was looking for that. This is an e-alert capability, actually what I was just talking about, from Westford. It's a little hard to see because it's a little small. However, you can see how you can go on and put your email and either get notified of certain information or certain agendas, meetings, et cetera. So, it's a little nifty kind of, you know, enhancement that we're going to have. I think it's going to be a very good thing. However, we are at the point now where we do need to see the next step taken. I'm not sure if the board would want us to post, even just post the front page that I showed you, the mock-up, maybe for public comment or to get further comment on what people might want to see or where we go with it. I would suggest kind of a short timeline, only because we want to keep this moving along. And we are at the point where we just kind of want to get maybe some comment back and then move on to wrap up that front page and get the departments going to migrate their data out.
Hey, Brian, could, I know this one says residents. I mean, it's a, you know, it's from another town. But can businesses also sign up for alerts like this?
Yes.
All right. So, if we could do that on ours, I think that would be a nice thing to have.
So, just to, just to go back to the clean one. So, so this is where we're at again. And if the board does have any opinions on, you know, what you would like to see us do. We're an informal group that met, whether we just all scatter and the town administrator and myself and Vanessa try to move this along or we do a different, you know, we carry the ball forward a little differently. Or we're pretty much at that point. We just need a little guidance on that from the board. But, you know, once we get this, once we get this front page up, we can really jump off running. The only impediment is that we are in the summer. And some departments are a little thinly staffed for the next month. But I don't see that delaying the fall timeline, you know, or jeopardizing that timeline.
So, looking at these upcoming events, Brian, can you have a link? So, for instance, zoning Board of Appeals meeting, can you link right to their agenda from this front page?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yep.
So, you don't have to go through each individual?
Correct. You don't have to try to find it somewhere else. Correct.
Make it easy and customer-friendly.
Correct. Correct.
I've seen a number of virtual town halls at a presentation before. And certainly, it's long overdue. I guess my only comment or concern is that the five people that are the members of this effort also have full-time jobs. And our municipal technology committee is still in the process of being formed.
Reformed.
Huh?
Reformed.
Reformed. And, you know, we have so many talented people in town. The question is just getting them willing to step up and volunteer. In terms of the timeline you're working with, am I being unrealistic to think that we might be able to get you some help if we're looking at an early fall launch date?
No, I don't think that's unrealistic. I don't think that's unrealistic.
I think, yeah, I think the heavy, I think the heavy lifting comes after the front page is designed. The departments need to go through their current data in their website and determine what's old and we don't need, and what do we need to migrate forward, so...
The good thing is, I think a lot of the departments are looking forward to moving off the old platform.
Right.
I know even my department is, and it should be no surprise to them that they're going to be expected to, you know, get that, to clean up basically their data and get a new fresh look to this great information source.
Yeah, well, like I've said on many occasions, the internet is here to stay, and this paper will not be with us probably much longer. And if we can make it easier, we can make it on people to access information, the more we should be aiming towards that objective. So, are you looking for our comments or thoughts on this front page here? What is exactly you're looking for?
Well, more of what you'd like the next step to be, would you like a public comment period, or would you like to, you know, I know the municipal technology committee would have been a great resource. Unfortunately, we have a, an applicant, I believe, that was delayed of possibly getting, getting on there quickly. However, that's kind of the next step, unless you have any huge issues with looking at this design, you know, if there's any comments that you see something, you know, that you're very unhappy with or missing.
I don't think it hurts to put it out for public comment for a period of time with the understanding that we're on a timeline, and, you know, there may be some very helpful, informative suggestions that come out of it. So, if you can publish this front page as, as the first working draft, if you will, and get some solicitation, feedback.
I don't see why not, and...
Everyone agree with that?
Yeah, no, it's looking great, too.
Yeah.
Just one question, did we determine the color of the page, or is that the only color that you can use? The reason I ask that, I know it's blown up, and I don't know, because I'm just having difficulty seeing it, because it is enlarged, or...
No, the problem is the screen, and green and brown are difficult to read.
All right.
We did determine it, by the way.
Okay, that's fine.
So, we can change it.
I like it.
I'm not suggesting changing it, I'm just asking, is it distorted because of the screen, put it that way? You're going to get responses back to change the color, so I think we need to avoid that.
On my screen, it's a little more sharp.
Okay.
So, you're right, it's the bigger screen, a little bit, that's...
Okay, so it's distorted, so I don't want anybody to think that's the clarity.
Right.
Well, maybe, you know, the colors of our flag maybe can be used as the background.
No, I'm not suggesting changing it, but if you're going to put it out there for comment, you might get 20 different shades of green suggested.
Sure, that's okay, too.
I think it's, I think it's, has great promise. I have some feedback that I'll just give you guys offline, we don't need to take up more time right now. Yeah, that's all, I think we're getting there. Appreciate the group's work.
Okay, so we'll get public comment, and we'll see what we get back, and we'll certainly update the board again when we're farther down the road. I don't see any issues, I think it'll be a great project in the end.
Fantastic.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your work, thanks for the presentation.
Consent agenda, approve minutes from June 16, 2015? Does anyone have any issue with those meetings that were circulated? Move to approve those minutes, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Accept the resignations from Dorian M. Jazinski from the Southborough Scholarship Advisory Committee, and Mark W. Murphy from Recreation Commission and Community Preservation Committee as Recreation Commission representative, and accept the resignation from Storm D. Maguire from the Youth Commission. I don't think we have to vote on those, correct, Mr. Purple? All right.
I would just note that further down the list, we're going to reappoint Mr. Murphy to CPC as an at-large.
Accept the donations from the following, $3,908 on behalf of Southborough Recreation, $40 for the Southborough Library, and $45,000 for a pilot payment from St. Mark's School, with thanks to the above. Nominate Jennifer A. Condon, C-O-N-D-O-N, as Inspector of Animals, and appoint Jennifer A. Condon as a special officer. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Point Karen Gallagher again as tree warden. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Vote to appoint Mark W. Murphy to the Community Preservation Committee as Citizen-at-Large.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Vote to appoint Annette Casco, C-A-S-C-O, to the Southborough Emergency Planning Committee, SEPC. Sarah, S-A-R-A, Title III, as Marlboro Hospital Liaison. All in favor?
Aye.
Approve budget transfer to balance fiscal year 2015 snow and ice deficit.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Approve three sets of executive session meeting minutes that were in the packet, those being January 22, 2015, April 7, 2015, and May 19, 2015. Is there a second?
Second.
Hold out April 7th, I wasn't present for that.
Hold on those.
Were you going to hold, or are you, are you going to abstain?
I'm abstaining from April 7th, I wasn't...
Okay. Is there, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ten, approve release of the following executive session minutes. As you know, we've been going through some of the backlogged or backdated executive session minutes to release them for, into the public domain, and I would move and change the agenda item, but I would move to release the following minutes, January 20, 2015, April 7, 2015, April 13, 2015, April 28, 2015, and May 19, 2015. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mrs. Faniff, are you abstaining from the April 7th as well?
Yes.
Other business properly before the board, reconsideration of annual appointments for fiscal year 2016, Mr. Purple?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, these, what you have before you is a list of people who were not appointed within the 15-day window as created by the new bylaw. The, in order for these people to be appointed at this point moving forward, the board would need to reappoint them. These are all people who had indicated that they did want to be appointed, but for one reason or another, did not get to the town clerk's office within the 15-day window, and he had forwarded me this list, and for your consideration, if you wish to reappoint them, we'll be notifying them first thing in the morning of their new, and you can determine whether it's their last window.
I would move, so move to reappoint unless anyone has any questions or concerns.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we dealt with item 4.2. With that, I would move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Feel free. Thank you all.